All right, it is seven o'clock. We will call to order our Thursday, April sixth city council meeting. Let's start with roll call.
Councilman Becker?
Here.
Councilman Hartwick?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Schultz?
Here.
President Shear?
Here. Agenda item three is public hearing. This evening we have none. Agenda item four is our public comment. As a reminder, the council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance. Or state the following items for the record when called upon. That would be name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comment unless the item is also elsewhere on the agenda. We do have one person signed up for the in-person public comment, and that would be Ann Engelman.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to hold a full agenda tonight.
You want to press the button until the turn screen? We just want to press once. There you go.
My name is Ann Engelman. I live at four twenty-eight Sherman Avenue East in Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. I'm here to remind everyone who might have forgotten that April is Poetry Month. And that we are very blessed to have Lori Niedecker, a very important poet in our community who used to live here in history that comes with that. I would like to give a huge shout out to Holly Tierney at Tourism with our Chamber who is beginning to pull together. An event called Write on the River, and it all culminates on May the thirteenth, which is the day after Lorene's birthday. The publicity is going to be everywhere. There's something for everyone, kids and adults alike. I wanted to read three short poems this evening of Lorene's. All of them agree in regards to our poetry walls. The first poetry wall was Fish Fowl Flood. That is from the larger poem Pan to Place. These two stanzas from the first part of Pan to Place. Pan means celebration, so celebration to place. Pan to place, and the place was water. Fish foul flood, water lily mud, my life. In the leaves and on water. My mother and I were born in swale and swamp and sworn to water. Further in the poem, she says about herself, which is second poetry wall in our town. I was a solitary plover, a pencil for a wing bone. From the secret notes, I must tilt. Upon the pressure, execute and adjust. In us, sea, air, rhythm. We live by the urgent wave of the verse. Our third poetry wall, which is on the the wall of the hometown pharmacy. Is the poem mergansers. Mergansers are ducks. Mergansers fans on their heads. Thoughts on things fold, unfold above the riverbeds. The reason that we chose three, these three poems for our poetry wall was Fish Fowl Flood. What six words describe your life? We often ask that of our residents just to dream about what six words might describe your life that can happen. With kids or adults. In the second one, I was a solitary plover, a pencil for a wing bone. Scotty's Eatmore says, we are the solitary cooks, a spatula for a wing bone. So again, what kind of animal or bird might you be? And the third with mergansers, things and thoughts on things fold, unfold. What thoughts on things fold, unfold in your life along the riverbeds? We are dedicated with the friends of Lori Niedecker to furthering the legacy of. Of Lorene, and now that we have Holly at the chamber, she is going to make Fort Atkinson a destination for poetry. We've already started that and it will continue. So stay tuned and be proud and begin to think about your thoughts on things. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Thank you. This will be a first call for public comment, also in person or on Zoom. A second call for public comment. Is a third and final call for public comment. Seeing none, hearing none, we will move right along. The agenda item number five are consent agenda. As a reminder, the consent agenda that is outlined below is presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the president.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item six petitions requesting communications. Six A is the proclamation recognizing National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and we have Chief Bump here as well as Cora Musgrove.
Hello, everyone. So it's National Telecommunicator Week starts on Sunday, the ninth, and goes through the fifteenth. It gives us a opportunity nationwide to recognize and think about the important role in public safety that our nine-one-one dispatchers play. A lot of times we forget, but the first emergency responder on the majority of all the calls that occur in our community is our nine-one-one dispatcher. They are there to support law enforcement, EMS and fire. They are the ones who dispatch all of the emergency calls. Over the radio, answer all the incoming nine-one-one calls for our community. So it's a great time for us to sit back and acknowledge the voice and the, you know, now a face that we often don't see, but we just hear that voice. So. Someone, a team that we really appreciate. Fort Atkinson has five full-time emergency dispatchers and six part-time emergency dispatchers that run our emergency communication center twenty-four seven, year-round. Day, night, holiday, they are there. There is always someone in that seat to answer the phone. So I'd like to call up Cora Musgrove, who is our third shift dispatcher. Cora has been a nine-one-one dispatcher for our agency for five years and has been a city employee for nine years. She was a. Community service officer and then became full-time dispatcher, and we're happy to have her, so.
I do think it is important to recognize the full proclamation is available on the city's website, but there are two lines that are. Probably sum up a telecommunications importance the best, and that is. Whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters. By monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. So again, we thank all of our telecommunications that are here in Fort Atkinson. We will move on to six B, which is the presentation relating to the police department canine program.
Do we need to do a motion to approve that?
Oh yeah, we probably should actually recognize the proclamation.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the proclamation, recognizing National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. All right, now six B.
All right. A little bit later on the agenda, there is. A topic to revigorate and reactivate our police department canine. Thought it was a good opportunity, maybe just to give a little bit of an overview of our canine team program and the history behind it. Prior to going on to that agenda item. So the Fort Atkinson Police Department got its first canine in two thousand and fifteen, and that was made. Possible by a grant and a lot of donations and community support fundraising. That made that happen. The first dog in the history of our police department. A few years later, we were able to get our second dog. And just in towards the end of two thousand and eighteen is when Bolt was retired after an emergency surgery that he had after an intestinal. Blockage or a blockage in his intestine. So. At that point, the canine unit has kind of just, you know, we haven't had a dog. The program's there. We have funding there. But we just haven't had a new dog. One of the main reasons be that we haven't jumped into getting another dog, even though we've had the money there. Is you know that our agency is going through a lot of growth right now, a lot of change, a lot of retirements, new officers. And when Bolt retired, we just didn't have that next officer ready to take on that role. For their own home reasons, not having a home that was ready for it or a family that was ready for it. And then just a lot of new officers that weren't really at the point where they mastered their position as a police officer, patrol officer. Obviously, if you take on a bigger role, a bigger responsibility with a dog, it can. It can be a lot to take on if you haven't mastered what you're doing now. So. Our dog and all the dogs that are within our agency have always been dual purpose patrol dogs. So you've, you've seen on TV and news, law enforcement agencies that might have a dog that's just for locating explosives. Or just for drugs or a dog that searches for cadavers. Well, our patrol dog is a dual purpose dog, which means that they can do multiple things. They have more than just one expertise. So the dogs that we have had and the dogs that I want to maintain or get in the future would all be dual purpose, and that means. One, they're trained to locate narcotics. Most drug dogs are narcotic trained dogs. It's marijuana, heroin, methamphetamine, and cocaine. You can see up on the screen, I have heroin, methamphetamine, and cocaine underlying. Those are really the main things that are important. For us and the things that we really want to address in our community. If you can go to the next slide. The other expertise or skill that our dogs have is tracking. That means if someone walks away from a home, a child is lost in the woods or a person runs from a police officer. That dog can pick up that scent trail and follow that to its endpoint, and that would be tracking. The other part of tracking sometimes is the apprehension or the handler protection part of it as well. So dogs are trained to apprehend after they track. They can apprehend if ordered to do so. And also hold up, do a bite and hold, as you can see in the image on the bottom left, so that person could be taken into custody. Obviously, I don't want to point that out as like this is the main thing dogs do. That takes a lot of, it's something that you don't. That it shouldn't be taken lightly. Officers have to make sure they follow use of force guidelines to do something like that, of course. If you go to the next slide. Area searches. This would be the most common type of search that a canine does in law enforcement. So a lot of times, an example of an area search is. I guess the easiest way to explain it, if we had an armed robbery at a gas station. A person robs a store, exits out a door, the employee has no idea where that person went after they've exited that store. They call nine-one-one, the police come, and the person says, all I know is they ran out the front door, and this is what they looked like. We don't know where they went. They could have went any direction. So a dog can take up an area search where the handler releases the dog in an area to identify where that human scent is. And where the human scent is coming from in the air and also on the ground. Identify that and then jump onto that track and go. So that would be an area search where you have no idea where to begin. That is a great example of an area search. A lot of times that's great with a fleeing subject that you get there late. A missing person, someone walking away from maybe a community-based residential facility, a child who goes missing out of the home, and we have no idea where. So the dog can be used to do all three of those searches and tracks. Something interesting about doing tracking and area searches is a dog can pick up a scent even three to five hours after the incident occurred, which is something I think that's pretty impressive. And you can go on to the next slide. The last thing of the dog would be trained to do is evidence location. So somebody takes a piece of evidence. A handgun, a part of a handgun, or any other tool or item and throws it into a field, throws it into a ditch. That dog can do an area search and locate evidence, you know, at a crime scene or someone fleeing from, from the scene of a crime. So that would be the other skill that our dual purpose canine would have. I think, is that the last slide? It's not the last slide because it's the most important thing. One of the things that we find the most value, it's great to have a dog that can find drugs, that can track. People that are lost or catch bad guys. But what we really realize is that dogs can really break down a lot of barriers between us and our community. People love dogs, people love animals, and having a dog as part of your police department helps break down those barriers. Helps people get excited about things that are going on in the police department, and they want to be a part of that. And we've definitely seen that in our community. When I gave this presentation back in two thousand and fifteen, I put together a slide presentation with a bunch of pictures from, that I just found on the internet. Because we didn't have a dog, we didn't have a program at the time. It's nice to be able to put the slideshow together today and actually have pictures of our dog, our vehicle, our officers, and our citizens. And even people that are not from our community, being active and interested in our, in our community and our agency. You look on the left, you have officer, officers' hefties, both hefties. With a local youth who did a lemonade stand, all to raise money for our canine program. You have the next picture on the bot, on the bottom left, the middle left, and that is a family that came. Here on vacation from Panama and got a tour of the police department and got to meet Bolt and Officer Bobby, the handler at the time. Probably something that doesn't always happen, right? The next picture over is our local, one of our local Girl Scouts that on multiple different occasions. Had the dog come and do a presentation. They did fundraising and did things for the canine program. And that bottom right picture is a Sienna Crest, a local. Local business that where we came out and they supported us as well. So I think it spans the whole. The whole group of, the whole community is really been a part of it. So. Is there any questions about specifically about the canine or the canine program that. That might be in the back of your head?
I'm just curious. I know you said the PR piece is kind of, you know, what you consider the most important. Would you say that's the biggest role that. Bolt and Dino played compared to those other things that they're specifically trained to do?
I would say yes, definitely, because it's just, it's always, it's always more visible to the community. And it's something that they're more excited about. You know, we have a lot of support in the community. The police department seems to be. Well-liked in this community. But I would have to say that when Bolt was here, Dino was here, they were the favorite officer of the department. So I think that just goes, it's just the way it goes. The nice thing about our program, and this occurred from the beginning, is we started it with a, with a grant and donations. Since two thousand and fifteen, the canine program, the canine team has never. Needed or spent a single dime of taxpayer money to be active. We've always run off of donations, fundraising, and grants. And that is my goal moving forward forever is to always have a program where we can do that. Sometimes it takes a little bit more work with fundraising and doing things. But right now we have a very healthy account at the Ford Community Foundation. And I don't see us in a position where we need to worry about. Ever having to budget any money, taxpayer money to keep this program active, to keep it going and, 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 you know, still have plans for the future. Dogs don't last forever, so you, 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 you know, might get five to seven years out of them if everything is good and healthy. But you know, always fundraising so that knowing that in the future we can get another dog and always have that. That special part of our agency, that part of the community there, that resource. It can't, I, I don't think I was going to say anything else. Any other questions?
Yeah, and a dog's many talents of finding things whether it's checked out of a car window or under a couch or in a closet. Is he also able to find things that are buried?
Um, I can't answer that for you. I guess it depends on how, how recent it was buried. But obviously, certain dogs have a better, better skill at that.
I'm thinking more, God forbid, they're missing person than, and he, will he say, no dig here, we, this is where.
No, we'd have to bring in a different dog, a most likely a cadaver dog or a dog that would, that would, is trained for that smell, so.
Okay.
It would be just a little different, yeah.
Where do these dogs usually come from? Where do they get trained?
So there's a number of different kennels across the country that you can take advantage of. Our dogs, the first dog was from. Von Stoll's kennel, which was out of Campbell, no, which was out of La Mirra. They are no longer in business. Bolt came from Josephine, which is out of Eustisford. There's a couple others in the state, but Josephine, we did a lot of research leading up into, when we got, or leading up to our purchase of Bolt. And they really were the best fit for our agency. And one of the main reasons for that is they, a lot, they were able to find us a dog that fit what we were looking for, the dog we were looking for to bring back to our community. One that can do all the work, but is still a dog that a young kid can walk up to and give it a hug. And be excited to be around it, and it's playful, and it's a family dog too. And then also just being as close. So. Having a canine, you always want to be, have access to your training kennel, your supporting kennel. For contingent, for contingency training, update training, and just as a quick resource. Having one that is out of state or a few hours away makes it a lot more difficult to really just have that, that connection. So that's another reason why I went with that comment. I, I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next, on the, the next item, and I'm sure you might have a little more questions. This was more or less just to give you a kind of a, hey, don't forget about this, and this is why I'm here, so. We're good?
Perfect, thank you.
All right, we'll be back in a minute.
Six C is the annual stormwater report and presentation.
Yeah, thank you. This is the time of the year where I remind everybody that we live on a river and. That everything that we do flows into the river. So no matter where you're at in city of Fort Atkinson. If you drop it in the, in the streets or on your driveway, it winds up in either the Rock River or the Bark River. We are permitted for our stormwater quality by the DNR, and every year the DNR asks us basically to report on how we've been doing. We've been doing well. They came through all of the state probably a little over ten years ago and said. You guys need to do better with your stormwater municipalities, and they were right. We can do a better job. And so they began a progression of indicating how to do better. So how to make that water more clean before it gets into the river. And there's a number of different things that the city has done. Over the years with respect to street sweeping that you see happen over the summertime. Our largest project was about four years ago on the Larson Lagoon. Where we took a tremendous amount of stormwater from the city, put it into this lagoon to allow it to settle. And sort of filter out before that water gets into the Rock River down behind the wastewater treatment plant. And we have about probably a handful of additional projects like that that are on our docket to accomplish in the coming years. The DNR has said that we just simply need to make progress on these things, but has not instituted deadlines on getting that stuff done. So. That's been nice for us to utilize our stormwater utility to build up the capital to be able to, to look at those projects. I will say that we are hearing whispers about those deadlines perhaps coming forward at some point. So. We're well positioned to take care of that stuff when the time comes. We also do a lot of marketing for stormwater, so we are part of the Rock River Stormwater Group, which is a group of eleven municipalities up and down the Rock River. Who are similarly permitted. Part of our permit is education of the public. So you'll see during the farmer's markets, usually once or twice during the season. Some folks from the Rock River Stormwater Group will be there, usually students from the University of Whitewater. Attend and provide various pamphlets and brochures. There's a mascot, I can't remember the name, it's a water droplet called. Grippy or Droppy or something like that. But anyway, all the, all the fun stuff like that, that, that occurs here in the schools and the farmer's market, and then we do the river cleanup in September. Which has been growing slowly but steadily. We had, I think, a dozen folks last year at that. And we kind of ran out of things to clean up, which was also a good problem to have. So. So a lot of that public relations side of things is going on as well through that group. So I just get up this time of year, make everyone aware of that fact and the efforts that we have ongoing for the stormwater. Improvements within our city and remind everybody that everything flows to the rivers. So. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The report, I think, was included in the packet, and it is available for public consumption as well.
Very thorough report. I'm sure nobody will hop online to read it, but. You, you should. It's impressive, especially when we talk about street sweeping. I think the one number that jumped out to me that just floored me was the fact that. Almost eleven hundred tons of debris was removed off our roadways from our street sweeping program, which is amazing. So.
Yeah, those, those are expensive pieces of equipment, but they do a lot of fantastic work. So we're not swimming in eleven hundred tons of whatever was getting into the river.
Exactly.
You mentioned that the DNR is kind of saying you must have some future sites that we set up and do this with. Do we have prospective sites or should we be looking around the city going, what about that?
We do. We've identified, it was the TMDL report. TMDL is total maximum daily load. Basically, they've told us how much pollution we can put in the river and said, you got to get down to this level. So we've identified a few sites around town where we can put in some additional, they're called BMPs, Best Management Practices. For you and I's purposes, they're essentially detention ponds usually or dry ponds where we try to get that water to either sit for a little bit of time and settle out some of the sediment that's in it before it goes in the river. Or we have that water actually infiltrate into the ground, which is a very good filter and get back down into the groundwater. So we have locations identified. There are additional locations. Should these areas, you know, develop or something like that not be available?
Thank you.
Andy, can you just, like, is there a next step to, okay, this report gets filed, and then is our things checked or monitored? Does direction come back of you need to improve this or address this, or is it just the annual report gets sent? Filed, they track it, you know, on their end.
In concept, yes. In practice, no. So I think the DNR is a little like, like us, right? They're a little underwater with things. But there is a, through the, the TMDL plan, which is our plan to accomplish, you know, getting down to these various low levels of pollution. That was thoroughly reviewed when it was submitted. I think it was six years ago we submitted that. So they know we have a plan in place. I think my impression is that they look at these reports and they say, everything looks to be going in the right direction. They do audit municipalities. So I know, I think it was Janesville was audited a couple of years ago. So in those situations, they step in and do a more thorough review of what's happening. My impression of that is it's less. What would you say? Confrontational and more, you know, of a partnership, right? Where do you need help? What can we do better type of thing? So. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy.
Uh, let's see here. Agenda item seven, resolutions and ordinances. Seven A is the review impossible action on a resolution declaring official intent. To reimburse expenditures related to the Public Works Operations Facility and other road construction projects from the proceedings of borrowing.
Thank you. So at the January third council meeting, the council approved the purchase of parcels adjacent to the Public Works Operations Facility at seven hundred James Place. And at the February twenty-third city council meeting, the council approved a proposal from Angus Young for the design of the new Public Works Facility. There are several other residential projects planned in the Banker Road area, including on the city-owned land. And public infrastructure is necessary to support the development of those city-owned lands as well as mitigate the traffic concerns in the area. So for the first two items there in the staff reports, for those, for those items, staff did recommend that the funding. For those items be from the general fund, fund balance used upfront. And then that the city would reimburse itself through the proceeds of a future borrowing. So likewise for the infrastructure, for those other develop, for the developments along Banker Road. We would intend to borrow funds for that infrastructure. However, some of the projects and project costs may need to be expended prior to the receipt of those funds. I will also note that there is a table in the, in the memo that outlines the potential. Items that would be borrowed for in two thousand and twenty-four, for two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five. It is a substantial list, but I will note that not all of the. The revenue sources to pay back the bonds are from the general fund. You can see that there are funds to be paid back through the utilities for some of those projects, as well as the tax increment district nine for the Banker Road infrastructure. So in order to, to proceed with reimbursing. Uh, so in order to to proceed with uh reimbursing the city reimbursing itself through the proceeds of borrowing. The city council uh would need to adopt a resolution uh that you have before you tonight. And I am available to answer uh any questions that you might have about this item.
Rebecca, can you just talk a little bit? I know under the financial analysis, it talks about how. The city is not in a position yet to do kind of the full analysis of what the impact on the mill rate would be. Can you just talk a little bit more kind of about the timing of that? And how, you know, these decisions can and sometimes need to be made without being able to determine that full impact yet.
Uh, right. So as I mentioned, we do know that some of the um. Some of the funds that are borrowed will be paid back through some of the through the utilities and through other sources. We don't have that exact proportion. Those are estimates that are um in there for the Public Works Facility, which is by far the largest project that we have in that. At a total of of twenty million dollars split between utilities. We we have signed a contract with Angus Young to start the design work. Uh, once they complete the design work, we will have a much better uh understanding of how the actual cost. Of that facility, uh and from there we can uh work with our financial advisors and the Public Service Commission uh to. To understand how much of that can be um. Uh, debt repaid by the utilities. Uh, and as far as the other projects go, I mean, those those projects have been uh in. The longer term capital improvements uh plan for several years, but none of them have been. Uh, approved aside from the Public Works Facility land purchase and designing construction. Those were approved by the council or earlier this year. But the other items such as um some of these uh the ambulance equipment replacement or the department, uh police department squad cars. Uh, some of these other projects uh have not been approved through the budgeting process yet, so. These might change in the fall as we look forward to twenty twenty four. Uh, the twenty twenty four budget as well as the twenty twenty four capital improvements um budget. Uh, so so these are our placeholders at this point. The the resolution is worded in a not to exceed way. Uh, so we did want to make sure that there were enough um. Dollars in the resolution uh to be able to cover the the projects that we had in the uh. In the C I P plus the uh known um. Estimated cost of the infrastructure to support the Banker Road development that would be repaid through tid nine. As well as uh some of the other regular borrowing projects that we um typically endeavor every other year.
But to that point, I think important to note, this is not, this is, this is simply related to. Approving the intent to reimburse, not necessarily exact cringers.
Correct. This does not obligate uh the the city council to borrow that full amount. It it only obligates the city council to uh when funds are borrowed to reimburse. Um, the city general fund through the proceeds of that borrowing for the specific projects. That have been approved already.
Thank you.
I think it's important to point out too that. Even if we do approve this night, this this means that this is not all. By any means going on the tax roll right away. Um, and I know, you know, I talked to you a little bit, uh. Manager Lamir earlier today about, you know, maybe some possible funding mechanisms to explore. Um, I'm sure if there are appropriate grant opportunities out there that the city will. Very aggressively pursue those, so. Think it's important to my to remember this isn't all going to come at once, and this is all not necessarily going to go on the property tax rule.
Right, we are, uh, Engineer Sally and I continue to pursue any any option for any sort of grant funding or um. Borrowing program through state government or federal government relating to to this project. There there's not a lot out there. Um, but we are, we're definitely pursuing any option, uh including reaching out to um elected officials at the state and federal level. Uh, which I did today.
Good to hear.
Questions or discussion?
I'll go ahead and move to approve uh the resolution declaring official official intent to reimburse. Spenditures relating to the Public Works Operation Facility and other road construction projects from proceeds of borrowing.
Second. You have a motion and a couple of seconds. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Seven B is the second reading of a proposed ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Fort Atkinson for the property located. At thirteen ten and thirteen twenty Campus Drive from RS two single-family residential district. To P U D Planned Unit Development District.
Thank you. Uh, this is uh uh has come before you uh previously. This is related to the development of two. Uh thirty-six unit apartment buildings uh that are roughly at the corner of Campus Drive and the uh access to the high school. Uh, the P U D process uh is what we've been moving through with this uh planned unit development. Uh, that allows us to provide some flexibilities to the developer uh within our zoning code um. So that they can accomplish the project. Uh, the those flexibilities, I believe, were uh an offset, uh a slightly closer setback. Uh, on the one side to the streets, uh the building height going from, I believe, it's forty-five feet to fifty-two feet. Don't quote me on that, might have been fifty-four. Uh, and I think the third was the uh offset of the garage because this has underground parking, so fairly minor flexibilities. Um, we uh because uh this is zoning, uh and it is the zoning ordinance, uh our protocol at council is to take three readings. Uh, for the zoning change uh through ordinance. Uh, we had the first reading at our meeting uh on March twenty first. Uh, tonight is the second reading. Uh, and I did mention at the March twenty first meeting um that I would ask uh to uh forego the third reading. Um, we have not had any feedback on this request uh from anyone uh within the public uh realm. Um, and I believe that it's a, it's a project that is uh well needed, I I think, and and well received. So I would ask this evening, uh after answering any questions you may have, that we would uh forego the third reading and and move ahead with approving. Uh, the ordinance this evening, if you're comfortable as such.
I might have one question.
Sure.
Some of the parking lots you were talking about exited on towards the high school and were too close for certain rules that we had to need to adjust.
Correct.
As maybe a question for Chief Bo. Or if anybody in those apartments are hunters and fishermen's. And have gone come through that to close to the high school, are they in violation of any law?
Yeah, we're we're in um, so the uh the current development is actually in compliance with the zoning code. Uh, if that driveway remains private, uh manager Lemire and myself have been in discussions with the school district about making that road. Uh, actually into a public right of way that we would rebuild into. Uh, curb and gutter and sidewalks and all of that sort of thing. That's when the flexibility will be needed. Uh, so I don't, uh, and to get back to your question about the um, the uh access for uh. Recreation, hunting and fishing and things of that nature through there, uh I think it would be a public right, if it becomes a public right of way at that time, I think we would be okay.
I know my understanding of some of those that were described in. Thousand feet within within a thousand feet of a school. Do we cross that threshold?
Likely, um, but we don't allow hunting. Uh, so if you're actively hunting, we don't allow active hunting within the city limits. Uh, if you are simply transporting uh a firearm, um. You know, as you're heading to the shooting range or out to the hunting grounds or whatever. Um, I I don't know the rules on that, and I'm not going to put you on the spot that you may know the rules on that.
There wouldn't be a violation there.
Would they have to be in the trunk in a case? Cause I know you don't, you can trans.
I think actually I. Yeah, it's uh I hunt and I know it's, we have to have both your bow and your uh firearm cased when it's in the vehicle and and unloaded, so.
And I think it's important to point out that direct access onto that. That high school drive isn't in phase one, it's a phase two, so there's plenty of time to. Dive into that minutia.
A- and there wouldn't be access um unless and until it is a public right of way.
Right, right. Did I, did I get at your question?
Yeah, with one final. Did it, uh, that would include concealed carry? As long as you aren't going on the school grounds per se. Perfect, thank you.
Well, beyond that, I'm just glad that this is going to be moving forward again. I I continue to hear from people about how. Difficult it is right now to find rentals in the city of Fort Atkinson, so. The construction of these two new apartment buildings is badly, badly needed, and it's going to be a great thing for our community. I'll go ahead, I.
I was just gonna say, I will second that, so I will uh move to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of the ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, you guys moved a little too quick. No, I I agree with uh Councilman Becker. Um, housing studies have shown that we're we're going to be at a shortage of housing. Um, it's going to restrict the. The availability for people to find housing. Um, it's going to provide, you know, the additional. Residents within the city uh will attract workers for local businesses, also people to patronize our current existing businesses. Um, and then as also people who want to, who disagree with how many referendums they're seeing on on the ballot. One way that we can prevent. Future referendums is by growing the tax base. Um, and so by growing the city, this allows us to grow that tax revenue. And so I I fully support this, so.
I will say the only feedback that I have received has been the concern around traffic, but then I do remind everybody that we are actively. Studying traffic uh in this area. Um, so.
I can add that I I just had an update call yesterday on their data collection effort. Uh, my question was, uh, have you seen anything here that. Uh, surprised you or was out of the ordinary? And she said absolutely not. So we will get the analysis back shortly, uh but the uh the initial data collection seems to indicate there's nothing of concern here.
So we do have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Shear?
Aye. Uh, motion carries. So this will be the third and final reading uh regarding item seventy.
Adoption.
Oh, and adoption.
I move to adopt the ordinance, amending the official zoning map of the city of Fort Atkinson. To change the zoning of the property located at thirteen ten and thirteen twenty Campus Drive from RS two single-family residential district. To P U D Planned Unit Development District.
Second.
Motion and second. And again, uh, this will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Shear?
Aye. That carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item eight is reports of officers, boards and committees. We will move to A A, the city managers' report.
Thank you. I would like to congratulate Nissan Becker and Megan Hartwick on their reelection to the city council and congratulations to newcomer Kyle Jacob. Uh, as you may know through a release statement today, Megan Hartwick intends to resign her position effective at the end of her current term on April eighteenth. Uh, she was clear about that intention starting in February, so the city council will likely determine how to move forward with filling that seat at the meeting on April eighteenth. I look forward to working with Mr. Becker, Mr. Jacob, and whomever the council chooses over the next two years to continue the momentum we've established over the last two years. Would also like to thank uh Clerk Ebert and her team, as well as the Parks and Recreation Department staff and all of our election workers. Uh, for their part in yet another free, fair, transparent and successful election on Tuesday. I'm pleased to have Chief Bump here tonight presenting the proclamation for recognizing. Uh, the difficult but rewarding job of our telecommunicators and providing information and requesting reinstatement of the department's K nine program. That's very exciting. Uh, as Engineer Sally mentioned, uh, we have been meeting with school district officials to discuss traffic circulation. Uh, and plans to make that north-south uh high school driveway into a public right of way to accommodate infrastructure, uh including water and sewer extending north. Um, and access to the land along Banker Road for development. The city's Department of Public Works Operations Staff will begin experimenting with different work hours over the next uh several months. With the goals of increasing efficiency and operations as well as improving employee work-life balance. So if you see trucks earlier or later than uh you would otherwise see, uh, that is why uh we will be, we're trying a couple different things and then um. Potentially having something more permanent um this fall or into winter. Uh, on April twelfth, I will travel to the Wisconsin Dells with the hopes of testifying in front of the Joint Finance Committee relating to the state budget and the need to assist in more growing and sustainable funding. For local governments to provide critical services to our residents without relying on property taxes. Uh, the Parks and Recreation twenty twenty-three Summer Guide was sent to all city of Fort Atkinson residents through the mail. And registration opened this week. There are also physical copies available at the Parks and Recreation Office, City Hall, Museum, Library, Senior Center and the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I've already gotten my pool pass, so uh the um discount ends in May, so go ahead and do that now, everybody. The uh part two of the sixty-first annual Mary Hord Art Show at the uh Hord Historical Museum will begin on April eleventh. And run through April twenty-second. Part two features high school and adult artists. Uh, and finally, I applied for a Fort Atkinson Community Foundation matching grant to support the city's partnership with U W. Uh, extension for the upcoming Local Government Academy. Our goal is to have applications uh to participate ready by the end of April with final participants chosen by mid-June. Um, the Local Government Academy is scheduled to run five sessions in July, August and September. And this is where residents can learn more about local government operations and funding while making connections with elected and appointed officials and uh encouraging civic participation. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item nine, unfinished business. This evening we have none. Ten, new business. Ten A is the review impossible action relating to the purchase of Police Department K nine training and related equipment.
All right. Now I'm back. Um, earlier this year, about a month ago. Um, I was not really set, or I didn't think we were in a spot where we could take the next steps to reenact our canine and get another dog. Um, but in the last thirty days, uh Citizen came forward and gave a very nice donation. Um, that allows the program to take that next step and and uh. Get moving again and and bring a dog back to the community. So currently, we've always sustained our funds in the uh Community Foundation. We currently have just over thirty-five thousand dollars in the K nine account, so it's a money market account. Uh, that accrues interest, uh money market style, um and we're just over thirty-five thousand, and we've. You're kept that money knowing that as soon as we're in a position where we can. Get moving again and get a dog back in the department and deployed in the community, we're going to do that, but we just were not quite where we needed to be. To have money in the account to purchase the dog, purchase the equipment and still be in a position where we won't have to use tax dollar money. Until that donation came in, so. What I'm looking to do is make purchases. I currently have fifteen thousand dollars in the donation outlay account. Which is within the Police Department budget. And that will cover the entire purchase price of the dog and all of the training required for the dog and handler to be linked together as a team. Um, we're able, I'm in a position where I can reserve a seat to start in July and have that dog on the road in the community. Uh, at on the second week of August, so that's where we're at right now. Um, what I need to do is get your approval to use those donated funds that are within the budget to purchase that dog. To uh move forward and take and purchase equipment and put it into one of our squad cars to make it. Specific and special for the dog, so the dog has a safe place to be transported in during work hours and to and from work. Uh, and then also knowing that we will reestablish the. Uh, line item in our budget that's set aside for the K nine, so we, you've probably remember from the budget, you saw that line item. Um, and it was, it was empty uh the last, last year and this year. So what we've typically have done is we've earmarked or identified uh in that line item six thousand dollars. We uh have never spent over that six thousand, uh but that's the money we just kind of identify as, that's what I'll take for the year. You know, for incidentals or going to the vet if there's any, anything else you need to do, buying training, purchasing training or whatever. Um, so. And then what we've always done is before the end of the year. and then what we've always done is before the end of the year, I've had that money taken from our account at the foundation, and it reimburses every dime spent for the year prior to the end of the year. Uh get that check to Michelle, and then we balance that off. So you probably have a few questions. I gave a lot of information in the memo. Um I didn't really wanted to like go over the memo beginning to end, because I know you've all read it. Um but I want to still go through Jessupany Kennel. Um their, their prices are exactly in line with all the other competitors, but we put a lot of research into that kennel, and we know that's the right kennel for us, and that's why I'm coming forward with with them as our primary kennel, our dog provider. Uh we use uh ten thirty-three uh as our squad outfitter, so they would take care of all the upfitting. They have done everything in all of our cars, including the car that will be, have stuff swapped out. That's who we've always used, and we've never had any issues, so I want to continue doing that. Sometimes when you have different people going into cars, um things can get messed up, and then we have dead batteries, we have electrical issues, we don't have those issues. So usually when we kind of mess with that, it causes issues down the road. So um I just want to address the fact of why, you know, why this company and why this company. So that's why those are the quotes that are in the memo that I provided. I'm probably missing about fifty things to talk about right now. Um but I, I'm ready to answer any questions you might have as we move forward and hopefully bring this resource back to the community is is really what it's about for me.
Chief, I just have two questions. Can you, I assume whatever updates have to be made to the squad car to accommodate for the dog, that that doesn't impact the car being used by any officer who is not the K nine officer? Like, this isn't a separate vehicle that then is it that now it can only be used?
Well, it can't only be used, but it really is a s- a squad that's specific to the handler and the dog. The handler will take it home at night as they transport the dog to their home. The dog is, you know, um the dog works for the agency, is owned by the department, but is cared for by the handler twenty-four seven. So it becomes his dog, his or her dog, family dog, uh work dog, companion is there on both sides of life. Um so um that doesn't negatively impact our fleet, um so which I'm gonna project and say is is that an issue where you were taking a car out of the cycle? Um it will not. Um we just got our new car. It's ready for the road as of last week uh that we purchased this year. And um in a perfect world, if we have no breakdowns and we get to next year and we get um another new vehicle or two, um I will probably not get rid of two cars. I'll only get rid of one to help ease that. Um so it won't cause an issue as long as everything works perfect, which it always does. Um but we can always use that car if we need to. Um if we need to to bring it back when the canine handler and dog are not working and deploy that as a squad car, we still have that ability. Um we, the equipment we use then purchase and set up with that vehicle, we still maintain a backseat for prisoner transport. It's a single seat on the backside, so the cage takes up three-quarters of the back, and then that one uh part is is equipped to transport a prisoner, so anybody could use it.
Then my only other question, I'm just curious if the, if an officer has been designated as the the handler yet, or if that's something you're still determining?
Well, um I have a internal process that has been initiated. We are currently accepting letters of interest right now, so the person has not been identified. Um that will be toward the deadline is April twenty-first. Interviews will do in May, and then that will give us time, as long as you guys approve everything, uh for us to take that handler who is selected to the kennel with us, so we can match that person with a dog where those two um their personalities mesh, I guess is the easiest way to say it.
Do I get to swear in the canine again?
Yep, we'll do the same thing like we did the the last time we were.
Both. That is very, it's very honorable for me. I love doing that.
I just want to say it's a quality idea and a heartfelt well done.
Good.
Do you know, are there other local jurisdictions that have canines, uh or would this canine also be used for mutual support?
Um the other agencies around us have canines, but we will always use our canine, our officers to support all uh neighboring jurisdictions as we, we do normally. We all need to um we all play a role together for countywide uh public safety, because we all need to help each other uh when times are not going well or when we need each other. The county currently um has filled a void for us um as much as they can. When we do need a canine, we can request them. Um so that's been our closest um resource up uh while we've not had a dog. Um Watertown has a canine. Whitewater, I think, is in between as well right now. I think their officer uh left their agency a while back, and I think their dog was retired, but I'm not a hundred percent that I know there, there was some movement there. Um our, our county to the uh counties on all sides of us all have canine units. Um so there are, there are dogs to use um and dogs to, to um to play a a bigger role than just our community. I think it's important that we always do that.
What is the average service expectancy of a canine unit?
Um five to seven years, seven can sometimes be a lot for a full-size dog, um but they say, you know, you could get up to seven years. I typically have seen about five years. So if you can get more than that, that's a, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I think, I think when I go home tonight, I'm gonna have to have a stern talk with, talk with my dog, has been seriously underperforming based on some of the things you've demonstrated canine can do. Um but I I I move to approve the purchase of a Police Department K nine and training from Jessupany K nine Services LLC for fifteen thousand dollars and the necessary and related equipment from ten thirty-three Vehicle Services LLC for ten thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents using donated and community foundation funds.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion or questions? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you.
Get more of those lemonade days coming. Get more of those kits. Your fundraise.
Uh agenda item ten B is the review and possible action to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for surveying services with heirs and associates.
All right, good evening. Thank you. Um so I prepared a memo for you guys that uh is the kind of next step to the progression of the development of the existing facility that we have for the DPW. Um so in February, the council approved the uh to enter into a contract with Angus Young, and it took until just about the end of March to kind of finalize the contract documents all as to a to an agree, uh agree upon um goal for the two of us. Uh after that was, that was done, the next logical step now is to get the lands surveyed so that we have all the base data to provide Angus Young with the uh documents they need to develop that land. Um along with that, we, we have the purchase agreement with the, to the lands to the east of the existing development. And as part of that purchase agreement, the, the city was required, is required to provide a survey to close on those lands. Uh so what I did was I prepared a uh request for proposal, uh sent it out to four firms that I felt had the horsepower, had the the talent to take care of all of that data collection and provide those surveys to us, and then work into the future, uh if necessary, with the, with the existing architect we have under contract. Um so as part of that uh RFP, I broke it out, so the council would better understand and the, and the provider would better understand the natural progression of this redevelopment. So the initial uh base bid item was for uh an Altaland Title Survey uh for both properties individually surveyed, so there'll be, all this fieldwork will take place together, but they'll be individually prepared um into two different surveys, one for the existing parcel and then one for the proposed uh acquisition. And then I broke out a couple of uh of alternate bid items, uh one to be completely transparent with how the kind of natural progression goes. The first item will be a legal description and an exhibit. Uh should the council decide to to move forward with vacating the existing right-of-way that's just to the south of the, to our existing facility. Um and then the second alternate bid item is to produce a certified survey map uh essentially plating all of the lands that we have, the individual parcels into one large parcel uh to be redeveloped. Um and those can come, uh they'll, they'll come along and 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 as time is required for those items. Uh so we did get three uh three bids back. Uh the bids that came back were from uh Heers and Associates, S E H, and Chapit Land Surveys, and they sent back their responses. All three firms are highly talented firms. They certainly have the horsepower and talent to take care of all the work that we need. Um so really, it it essentially came down to to the price. What was the re- most reasonable price available to us for all three phases of the work? Uh as part of the uh as part of this process, initially, uh Manager Lemire talked about, and and you approved earlier, some expenditures that will take place to be reimbursed as we borrow to develop this land. Um what I would propose to do is to utilize the fund balance funds to spend that as we don't, I don't have a survey budget set out there for this, this redevelopment. Um and then reimburse ourselves as we borrow, as we develop this land. My recommendation would be to go with Heers and Associates, and if the council feels inappropriate to approve all three phases, the the base bid and the two alternate bids. Um and then as we move forward, we can be, we can take care of the survey work, and they will bill us for the survey work, and take care of the next phase, which would be legal and and exhibit should the land uh that's considered right-of-way right now be vacated. We can take care of that at the next phase. And then finally, uh to plat the land in a certified survey map in the end before we move to actually break ground and construct. I know, I I got really wordy in the, in the memo. I apologize, but.
Um I just want to confirm, just looking at the Heers and Associates one, it does mention in there that the proposal is valid through March thirty-first. They confirmed an extension?
No, I did talk to Chris about it, and he, they're fine with the, the way it's set up. I did notify him immediately that I would bring it to the next council meeting as soon as I got the proposals in.
Okay, I just want to make sure there wasn't concern that.
No, there's no.
Go back and they would say, oh, it's actually higher now. Okay.
Any other discussion? Entertain a motion.
I, I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for surveying services with Heers and Associates for an amount not to exceed nine thousand five hundred dollars to be reimbursed to to the general fund through proceeds of borrowing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to agenda item ten C, which is the review and possible action related to the twenty twenty-three citywide network server upgrades.
Thank you. And this is not as exciting as dogs or building projects, but it's also equally important. Our current server existed um from a, a major upgrade that we had approved by council in December twenty fourteen. It was completed in spring of twenty fifteen, and this is the server setup that we've been operating with at that time. Uh in the twenty fifteen upgrade, um it was a major upgrade. It got us to be on some shared networks, um added new servers, built a secure, stable network that we did not have prior. But we've been operating on this since twenty fifteen, which is pretty incredible to have a server last that long. In the meantime, we have been adding more service as needed. Um we've been adding space, adding um enhanced security, different migrations into the Microsoft three sixty-five. Um so we've extended the lifespan and maintained the server as much as we can. Recently, we had learned that uh Microsoft is going to be terminating any support to our twenty twelve servers, which the twenty twelve service is what we um incorporate in twenty fifteen. Um it, this is terrifying because it's, it's ending support, but it also creates some great opportunities for us um with the addition of the fiber throughout the city um and strengthening all the connections and the security we have. Um this creates a opportunity that we could create um the next level into a small enterprise network. Um with the Police Department being a secure twenty-four-seven operation, they have the ability and a uh an area that can house these servers. Um it's not a large space that's needed, but when we're migrating and and moving all servers into one location, it would be um a seamless advantage to us that would allow our um IT partner to manage the entire network um in one location. Um but then also it unifies the entire system, so then um their portion, their language is a single pane of glass management. Um each phase, so it, the, the phases were incorporated with your packets. I'm sure you all saw they're very lengthy. There were four separate phases. Um the first three phases, the, the cost was palatable. Uh while the, the fourth phase is, is where it kind of dropped your job, because that's the largest and most costly phase. Um each phase requires persistent time management and planning. Um they all have to kind of be done in sync with separate um separate checkpoints along the way. Also, along the way, I uh Ignitec is working to make sure that we're still a hundred percent operationable, and that um they're testing every, every step of the way. They're testing to make sure we still have all our security in place. Everyone is still able to access their workstations, you know, no interruptions with any printers or services. So in the two thousand twenty-two budget, we had um set aside six thousand dollars for server upgrades um between the Clerk's Treasure Department, six thousand dollars with the Water Fund and six thousand dollars with the wastewater fund, um knowing that it was a very large project, and last year was, it would have been a very large undertaking. So we decided to kind of kick that off into twenty twenty-three. So we do have that um eighteen thousand dollars available for this project. And then in a twenty twenty-three budget, Chief Bump knew that their servers also needed some enhancements, so they had um set aside ten thousand dollars. So collectively, that brings together twenty-eight thousand dollars for the upgrade. Um it still leaves us um with a gap that we must fill. Um meeting with Manager Lemire and um Ignitec, we thought long and hard about the different phases along the way and and what this means to us and what um how important this is moving forward and uh, you know, open the doors for more enhancements in the future and making it, you know, continually serve us for many more years to come. Uh we took, looked into using ARPA funds. If you remember, ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act um that was funding provided um following the COVID pandemic. So to fill the gap, um it would be just over seventy-nine thousand dollars that um we'd be looking to use ARPA funds for. That still leaves um over a million dollars available in the ARPA fund. Um I know there is some um projects that we're looking to use um ARPA funds for this year, but at this point, um it's available for I would say for these um instances where it's not planned, but um it is a necessity. So we're grateful um for those funds. I'm happy to answer any questions. IT is not um a strong background of mine, but I can, I can cipher enough of of the upgrades to know what needs to get done.
Michelle, I guess one question I had, it, it is a lot of money, and I, I agree it all, it seems to be necessary. I understand Ignitec is our, is our um contractor provider, but while we're looking at this level of expenditure,
Mm-hmm.
um was there a consideration to kind of shop around at least the hardware costs or?
There hasn't been. Um Ignitec did go through and provide staff different quotes of the equipment, so if there was, you know, item B, they found several quotes for item B, and they did share those with us. So they shopped around for us because they knew that we usually have several quotes that are needed. Switching to another um IT provider is is certainly an option we have at some point. Um I don't know if now's the right time, knowing that our servers are going to be expiring. Um I will tell you that um the Police Department, they do background checks on all the employees within Ignitec that aren't in the Police Department and that have access to our equipment. So um it is an extra step that they take um to provide security for us. So, you know, maybe that doesn't mean anything, but it's, it's just something extra that we kind of go above and beyond to make sure that um
Sure.
you know, we have security. Um but again, down the road to um to venture out to find another firm to manage us, I don't think that's a bad thing.
Yeah, I, I would echo that, that perhaps after phase four, after we get through Ignitec's upgrades, if that's what we would decide as a council to perhaps have a, a technology audit done, and that would allow us the option to know what we have as well as who would be able to service it in the future, simply so we can have competing bids.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. No, and I understand it would be it's kind of like the changing horses midstream right now, while you're trying to do a major, major changeover, that would be, that would be difficult, I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
Michelle, can you just talk a little bit about, I know you mentioned how you know, obviously, increasing security by having all of these servers located at the Police Department, but are there other efficiencies or, you know, future cost savings or things like that that will kind of aid staff by making this change from separate servers in different areas to you know, this one location?
Yep, and that's something that um we had asked Ignitec to provide for us. Um so right now, for example, the Sonic Wall is um when we have one per server, so we're paying for nine renewals. paying for nine renewals for Sonic Wall. This will bring us down to just one. So there are certain licenses um, and certain security packages that we'd be able to condense and minimize. So we're going to see some savings there.
I appreciate that you say that, like I know what Sonic Wall is. For that very much. Giving a ton of her credit then.
I know as much as I, as I know, unfortunately, so. Um.
But so it creates efficiencies in other ways to.
It does.
Just security.
Yeah. So right now, the, the police department, how they, how their network was set up many, many years ago. Um, there's, there's two different machines essentially. And when the police officers pull in with their squads and all of their data gets backed up, sometimes it gets lost in transition because it needs to find the correct server to update and vice versa, when information is going out. So it creates a very big challenge when Ignitec has to go on site when they're having issues because first they have to decipher which server it is. Because they have too many that don't communicate together. So this is provided an upgrade to them to get them to better communicate between all their equipment and all their computers and, and emails and cell phones and the squads.
Because I assume we have to pay Ignitec anytime they do come out.
So we have a service agreement with them. Yep. So they.
Part of.
Yeah. So we purchase a, a bulk amount of hours. They're charging, um, their hourly labor rate is a hundred and thirty-five dollars. They only charge us eighty dollars per hour. So then we buy certain, uh, we buy bank of hours every month. So then we just use those hours. Um, sometimes towards the end of the year, we may exceed those hours, but they don't charge us the regular labor rate. They only charge us the eighty dollars an hour. Um, having everything housed in one location will ease the techs needing to go to all the locations. However, they still will to check in with everyone. They stop in to see if we have any issues with our, our computers or is any of our programs acting up? How's our printers working? Um, any connection issues that we're having? This does allow us to fully utilize our, our fiber that, that we've been putting in over the last several years as well uh, to connect all of our facilities uh, to each other uh, through this one hub. So it is, uh, and it also uh, to President Shear's point, uh, I think this project will get um, our um, IT situation to where it may need to be in order to actually seek out, um, you know, additional potential contracted services for this. So at this point, uh, when everything is a little bit of a mess and you have one, one company that has the keys to the mess and understands the mess, uh, you're, uh, you don't have many other options, but once you get it all organized, uh, as this project will get it all organized and in one place uh, with the, the single pane uh, of glasses, as they call it, um, we may be able to move forward in the future, um, with more competitive bids for providers.
Makes sense. I do have a question regarding uh, the backup location in Whitewater. Um, so I see that it is housed at Whitewater's police department. Um, so we are and maybe I missed it in the salt, but we are purchasing a secondary machine to live at Whitewater's police department.
That's just a virtual backup.
So Whitewater has a server already and we're.
We back up to both. So the, our police department and Whitewater Police Department has been doing this for years.
There is reciprocity. Okay. So I wasn't sure that meant that we were going to have to compensate Whitewater in some way or any, okay.
Nope. That's the agreement we have um, with fiber that had been established and connectivity that had been established. So that's already been um, going on. Um, several staff members, several different departments have actual backups that we take home at night and we swap them out. So this will ease that process a little bit. Um, and if the council recalls Tuesday morning, election morning, we had no phones and no um, internet. Our internet was down. So I contacted Ignitec at six AM because I was here and they got on it right away. And I said, I'm, I'm hoping you can fix this, you know, in, in between running the election. I said, I'm, I'm hoping this is not a bigger problem. He's like, well, it is, but we're getting there. We'll, we'll get there. Um, so they were addressing it right away at six AM and they had us up and running within a few hours, but this just is another issue of our aging servers. Um, and then the other um, aspect we have is our financial software is housed on its own server. And that's getting bogged down. So every couple of weeks we have to call Ignitec and have them reboot that server so we can access our files because it's getting slower and slower. So if I'm doing an update that should take eight minutes, it's taking twenty minutes. And in the meantime, it may freeze. So then I have to figure out what part of the update went through and what didn't go through and can I fix it? So definitely some um, challenges.
Well, fortunate that there is still some ARPA funding
Yes.
that uh, can be utilized for a project of this magnitude. I'll move to approve the four phases of the twenty twenty-three citywide network server upgrade project as proposed by Ignitec for a total of one hundred and seven thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and twenty-three cents using budgeted server replacement funds and American Rescue Plan Act funds as described in the staff report.
Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to agenda item eleven. Uh, that's miscellaneous. This evening we have none. Agenda item twelve is claims appropriations and contract payments. Toll base is the review impossible action relating to the verified claims presented by the director of finance and authorization of payment.
Move to approval list of verified claims presented by the director of finance and no authorized payment.
Motion and a second. This is a real call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Shear?
Aye. Motion carries. She takes us to agenda item thirteen, which is adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.